Pass, would you please leave me some time? Thanks everybody for coming out. We're gonna have an open forum discussion tonight. What we're gonna be doing is give it three minutes. If they're ready to speak, then we will... Once they... everyone speaks, we will just be discussing many of those items and many others. After that, we'll do... if you can raise your hand, and we'll acknowledge you. And we'll have a little more discussion. Other than that, oh, roll call. It's a roll call.
Mayor Morris?
Here.
Mayor Protimber Purvis?
Here.
Audman Green?
Here.
Audman Madred?
Here.
Audewoman Jones?
Here.
Audewoman Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Amber First.
The first one on the list is Andrea Spearing. She's called in on the phone. And when you speak, please state your name, please.
And your address.
Yes.
Hello, this is Andrea Spearing, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. I understand tonight a bit about what we plan on doing at the city moving forward for the next twelve months. And looking at the list that Mayor Morris had put out on the city council site, there was nothing mentioned about beach beautification. Whereas that was something you ran off when you were running for mayor, was that you would create this park-like setting at our beach. I'm a front row beach owner. I'm appalled at the state of our beach. There are broken signs, way too many signs, way too many trash cans. They get blown over, they get knocked over. One of the things that I would like to see the city focus on regarding beach beautification would be to have less frequent trash cans placement on the beach. We have a huge dumpster. But also to have more frequent service during spring break, holidays, and the high season of Memorial Day, the Labor Day. Instead of picking up on a Thursday and a Monday, could we pick up on a Saturday as well? Because the problem with the trash cans in high season, as everyone knows, even those of you that drive your golf carts to the beach, is that they get overfilled on Saturday. And it's not a quantity issue, it's a pickup issue. So I would like to encourage the city to seek more frequent trash pickups during high seasons and high beaches, beach times. And also to really focus when the police see people there with trash, to encourage them to take their trash home. If you look at the state park, if you look at the seawall, they do not have as frequent trash cans as we do. Yet they have less trash on the beach. No one likes looking at it, whether you're driving your car, you're walking, you're driving your golf cart, or you're sitting on your porch. Part of beach beautification and canal use... These are why people move to Jamaica Beach. This is why people come to Jamaica Beach. And I think we are not doing a very good job on that. So I would like to see a focus on our beach be part of the upcoming plan for progress in 2022. Also, I'm hoping that that nice berm at Buccaneer, as you head toward the beach, I know that's a tech stop thing, but I am hoping that large speed bump goes away very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll be addressing some of that. Pretty much everything you spoke of, we'll be addressing in tonight's meeting.
Is there a reason none of that was on any of the lists of things projected for next year?
Most all of that was in some type of detail or another. It may have been... It may have been under a heading, and the detail was not there. But it was part of the heading in the project that's included.
Well, all I saw regarding trash was...
We're gonna be discussing it as we go. Next.
I have Dale Huber.
I'm afraid three minutes ain't gonna be long enough, so I wrote some stuff out for y'all. If you don't mind, I'll give each one of you a copy. Just so I know that you got a copy. Is that fair enough? In these copies, there are three incidents. The first incident was where I inquired about Chief Hyman's tactics of dismissing citations. Okay? Which led to him giving me a phone call cussing me like a dirty dog. Okay? This was back a while back. Mayor, I know you're aware of it. You chose to do nothing. That's why we don't talk no more. Okay? I didn't vote for you for that reason too, just so you know. Okay? The second incident, alright? And I was told by Sean Hutchison, who I spoke to today on the phone, by the way. He's doing fine. That he didn't recall the incident when I personally handed him the complaint. Okay? There's three incidents in this packet that I gave you. The second incident is where a gentleman who sits on the park board by chance approached me in my front yard and assaulted me. Okay? His name's Jason Wortham. Alright? He chose to also do nothing on that assault. Okay? Much less get back to me and tell me anything in reference to it. Okay? And there was another incident where I was almost head-on crashed on Buccaneer where an older gentleman, who probably has some kind of medical issue, or maybe even been intoxicated, ran me off the road to the point that I had to take evasive action, jump a curb. Now, I don't know about y'all, but if somebody does me that way, I got a problem with it. So what do I do? I follow him home. "Hey buddy, you okay?" "Well, uh, 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 you know, your high beams blinded me. And I thought you were a renter." He tells me he thought I was a renter. Why would somebody say that? Why would somebody say that? And if we're trying to kill our people who are renting here, is that the deal now? Okay? I don't think that's the case. He also chose to not do anything on that issue. Alright? But at the time, the other guy was a Sean. He was the acting chief. And of course, I get a message from him that says, "There's no probable cause." Alright? Well, I don't know about you, but if somebody runs me off the road, the probable cause is in my statement. Okay? I'm asking for your resignation right now, because you ain't done nothing but tear this city apart, cost friendships, and your cause needs to be sued as well.
Address the council, please.
Okay? I'm asking for his resignation. If he don't give you his resignation, I expect y'all to fire him. Plain and simple. If you don't fire him, he's gonna drag you down with him, with the ship. Guarantee it. I've seen it a thousand times. And if you don't believe me, old friend, sit back and watch. Okay? You're not immune, just so you know. Done. Russell, I have one for you, buddy. Bell, let's slide on that one.
Next is Mark Sloan.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mark Sloan. I live at 16531 Jamaica Cove Road. Been a permanent resident here for about twenty-four years. Never had any problems in the past. I'm not gonna be quite as fiery as Dale might have been, but I do have something to say that relates to these things. Over a year ago, most of y'all know about it. Allegedly, all of you know about it, because it was supposed to have been a city council meeting. I was in a meeting with Chief Hyman. I recorded that meeting, because on the phone call I had with him the night before, he trash-talked my wife, threatened me with a lawsuit. Although he wouldn't tell me what my wife said on Facebook. Throughout the whole conversation, I mean, we didn't have a bad conversation. The only reason I recorded the conversation is because of the things he said about my wife. I don't know about you folks, but you talk bad about my wife, we got a problem. And I think anybody here would agree with that. Anyway, we didn't get any argument or anything. I listened to him, I was calm. He remembers the conversation. He was calm. He wasn't abusive towards me or anything, except with the kind of threatening me with a lawsuit. Anyway, I left. When I left, I was talking to the acting city manager, Sean Hutchison, I believe. And I just mentioned to him, I said, "Sean, do you have a recording of your chief of police saying this thing?" And he said exactly what was said on the tape. "Would you have a problem with that?" He said, "Well, I sure would." And I handed him the tape, said, "Well, here you go." He listened to the tape. He had a problem with it. He brought it to you folks. I know you remember, Clay, because I called you and I just got nothing but railroaded. I understand, that's policy. You know, you explained that to me, that that was policy. All I wanted to know was, was it addressed? Was it...? Nobody could give me an answer yes or no. I'm a citizen, and folks, I'm a good citizen. I caused no problems. I contribute to absolutely every cause that the city has. I've always been that way, and I'll continue to be that way. But when I have a complaint that goes to the city manager, and then to the city council, and I'm completely stonewalled, I have a problem with that. And I think anybody would have a problem with that. Just let me know. Was something done? Was it addressed? I don't care what was done. I just wanna know, was it addressed? Is this okay with you folks, that a chief of police talks to a citizen who lives here? I don't get paid to live here. I got a problem with that. And I really hope, I wanna bring it to your attention once again, you know, it was all over my little dog. You know, it was when the whole thing started with getting a ticket. My time's up. I paid my fine for the dog. And I just wanna see... I'm tired of being stonewalled. Thank you for your time.
Deborah, Mrs. Deborah Tabor. Deborah Tabor, 16916 Beach, Oklahoma. I had a couple other things I wanted to talk about, but based on the previous comments made, I'm going to address something other than what I had scheduled. The city has publicly denied any wrongdoing in the lawsuit that's been filed against the city by a former employee. Today, I went down to the federal court building, and for seventy whole cents, I got a copy of the lawsuit. And I realized that you're not going to make any statement as far as the allegations of the lawsuit. But I have some concerns that there are some allegations of criminal misconduct in this lawsuit. And my question is, who investigated these allegations that the city was then able to deny? And my suspicion is that the person who is named in the lawsuit is the person who did the criminal investigation of the allegations. And if that's the case, then I'm not sure we don't have more problems than some of these people have made reference to. Since I have a little bit more time, I'm going to address dune restoration that Andrea brought up. I walked down past the parking area, past Jamaica Beach, down on the west end. Folks down there had put up some dune fencing, and it is beautiful. They have diagonal dune fencing. It's from where the dunes were completely washed out, out about fifty or sixty feet. It's all done, it's all uniform. It's going to allow the dunes to rebuild back to where they were before the last storm. And it's just beautiful. And I'm not sure if that's something that could be paid for on hot tax money. I know we have surplus of hot tax money, and that would definitely be something that would go toward beautification of the beach and would allow our dunes to rebuild. And those dunes down there are already rebuilding. There was some of it that was two feet high in front of the dune fencing since the last storm. So if that's something that could be addressed, I think it would look really nice. Anna, I have a question. I'll look back on ours, but if we can get to that in discussion, I'll bring it to you. Thank you.
Dawn Towner?
Dawn Towner, 16700 Edward Teague Road. I'm also on the board for JBIC, which is the homeowners association, and just wanted to introduce myself, reintroduce myself. I'm still waiting to hear something from the council as far as trying to work some things together. Espionage, I see the street signs. Those are great. I'm assuming the rest of them are coming. And so just let me know. We have a meeting every... well, most fourth Saturdays. So y'all are invited. You're all homeowners. Y'all pay your dues. So come on out and let's talk.
Lee Robertson?
I couldn't think of anything.
I didn't need to sign up.
You wanna come speak?
You can have my phone.
Nah, I'm fine.
Anybody else? I'll address some of the personnel issues. We won't be discussing those. Those were needed to be discussed privately. But as far as the beach restoration and beautification, we are on that. We met, and it was on the city Facebook page and the city website, that we were working on the entry. But along with that, we're working on the trash service, which we are looking at getting it done on Saturday during the peak time. The signs, the entry. Something else we're even thinking about is hiring a port-a-can service, where they would have it there on the weekends, and then get it out of there. So we can... And I don't know if there'll be a charge. We're still weighing all that. If there's a charge to use it, or if we just have... We'll tell tax paper that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Of what kind of service?
A port-a-can service.
A port-a-can service.
Do you want it in front of your house?
It'll be near the entry.
Again, in front of somebody's house.
It's part of the beach, the beach area.
So put one in the canal in front of your house?
Also, we're gonna be talking about beach access plan. That's where all that falls in, is the beach access plan, which we've had one small modification we gotta do next month. Actually, next meeting. Other than that, just to bring y'all up to speed, we have... As everybody knows, the roads are getting done. Where most of them are being widened foot to two foot. I believe they're all supposed to be about sixteen foot wide, and some of them were fourteen and fifteen, so we've made those adjustments. It is gonna be a six-to-seven month project, so we gotta be patient. The other thing is, we have looked at getting the cameras put in here. Everything working. Everything's gonna get working here, and that should be done in three weeks. We've got a commitment from the gentleman now. We have now finally got the warrants taken care of. We're going to be... We've got over two hundred warrants that are several years old. We're gonna be implementing that, and we have a collection agency signed up to do that in addition to our current warrants that we will be issuing. SDR, the module has finally got completed. That's kind of been the holdup with the website. That module, it just took a lot longer than we expected. We wanted everything to be able to be done online, except the payments. Payments will still have to be made in-house or mailed. And so that's coming along. And finally, we should be going live on the website next week sometime. It'll take a few days. MUNICO, we are still waiting. It's frustrating. I know Debbie's been on the phone with them for months, and been on the phone with them so much that they've gotten kind of aggravated. But as I've said, if I need to call them, I will. This has been six months, a year, yeah, over a year to get done.
Years ago, no matter.
Yeah. Yeah, it's almost unexcusable. But they're almost there. So we're not gonna wait for that to get done before we go live with the website. But the website will have a lot more information. We will also be... March meetings should be all live. Facebook Live is what we are shooting for. And the water, this is what we're gonna be discussing here momentarily. We'll be putting a vote out. We've done phase one. We've completed that. We are now in the process of starting phase two. We are also thinking about adding on phase three. We got a few things that need to happen for that to continue. While we got them out here, let's get it done. We're gonna put off a few other projects, and we will discuss that more momentarily. What else do I have? Anyone else have a period, wanna answer any of the questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Dune fencing, that is part of the... That is part of the beach access plan. It's in phase two of that.
So if I can just...
Yes, go ahead.
Expand on that a little bit. So we're working on a project where we're cooperating with each other. The police chief is going to develop a traffic plan so that our beach can flow a little bit better. And then on my end, on the development services side, what we're doing is, right now, I'm on the research stages of doing the dune fencing. I'm looking at the Open Beaches Act, and I'm looking at how GLO requests that the fencing be done. Once I get that research completed, then I'm going to develop an application to the GLO. We're gonna go ahead and apply. This is gonna be very much like our beach construction maintenance permit. It's gonna run the similar course to that. But with that said, now that we have the permit for the maintenance of the beach, we can focus a lot on the trash, a lot on the trash cans. And then also, you know, Larry can definitely... Now that we have Larry working with us, he can definitely help us. Whereas last year, we didn't have anybody to go out there and do the maintenance. But we do have to have, by the standards that GLO gave us, we have to monitor that beach two weeks. That doesn't mean that's all we monitor. That just means at a minimum, we have to monitor every two weeks. So we do have a phased project to beautify the beach, for sure.
And part of that is... We'll address what you were talking about is, in March, we will be lining all of the bollards and trash can receptacles up and having new signage.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
My question is, Surfside and Freeport down there, they'll be... They put a huge request out for Christmas trees. And they have a weekend where people from the Houston, Clear Lake, Kima, Lake Jackson, Freeport area come down and put their Christmas trees on the beach. Obviously, it must be GLO-supported, because they've been doing it for years and years and years. Is there a reason that Jamaica Beach doesn't do something similar?
Andrea, I've requested that every Christmas.
I don't know who I'm speaking to.
This is Clay, the mayor. I am... I have... I completely agree with that. Every time we've asked, they have specifically said no. And I know down in Freeport, I've heard the rumor that they've done it.
No, it's been in the newspaper, it's not a rumor.
Well, they have said no to us. And... But I'm a firm believer in doing that. And doing it in conjunction...
When I asked to do that in front of my house, I was told I could not.
Correct. That's what they have told us. Yes, Marcie, go ahead.
This is Marcie Hoffman. A couple things. One, maybe if we get enough residents to write the GLO that we are all in favor of the Christmas trees and want them at the beach, that they tend to be swayed by popularity. So maybe they would change that. So maybe we could just have like a formal document that we could all kind of plug and play our address and send that their way, because maybe it will annoy them enough. And two... I mean, I'm happy to annoy people. Two, the trash receptacles at the beach, we were supposed to be getting more trash can holders, because them going away and washing away into the surf has always been an issue. The holders make them look a little better and keep them retained. So we had a thought set aside money for more holders, or we needed to. One...
But, but Marcie, regarding that, from the porch of my house, I can see twelve trash can holders.
Holders?
Holders with trash cans. I don't think I need to sit on my porch looking at...
Well, if you had a better dune, you wouldn't see that many trash can holders.
Well, I did lose about half of my dunes, but yeah, I would still see that many, because the dunes were never high enough to not see trash cans.
Yeah. I mean, they do need to spread out a little bit better, but also in that regard, we do need toppers for our waste receptacles, because we have a wind and bird problem emptying those. And then in addition to that, at one point, I did wanna get some of the receptacles painted to make the ones that aren't in trash can holders yet, have that be a community thing, if that's something people are still interested in, having a painting party to work on that. So if anybody wants to do that project with me, I'm happy to work on those that I know that are further down west, where we spaced them out a little further and haven't gotten to the receptacle holders yet. We can paint them this year. But I think we do need to focus on spacing and emptying and retaining those that we have, and not letting people burn out the bottom of them in the car.
And maybe have police write citations for trash, and not just tell people to pick up their trash.
Well... They have to see them in the act, too. I mean...
If you're sitting there and you have trash around you, pansies are pretty good, it's yours.
Well, we're not gonna get into how to enforce the law, but there is specifics that need to be done, and they are very aware of what we've directed them to do.
Maybe we can explain, have it somewhere on the website that explains what the law is and how the police officers have to see them physically do it. You know, to drop litter. You know, again, explain that to people.
Again, as an annoying citizen, I think if we all, you know, approach people as citizens here and say, you know, we don't allow trash on our beaches, and you kind of be like, hey, is that your trash? Is that your trash? Is that your trash? As you walk through.
I walk the beach with trash bags. I hand them to people and ask them to please pick their trash up.
And then they ask you if you work in the city.
I get touched that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we... Our police department has also carried in the UTVs, yeah, given to people.
That works really good.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Andrea, I'd like to address the number of trashcans. This is Jill McGrave. Andrea, with the flood of people that hit our beach, we had two choices. Let it get even more trashy or have enough trashcans that we could handle the trash. If, if we have, if we have less people on the beach and is that situation smooths out some, it may be possible to reduce the number of trashcans. But our choice, I think, is, is gonna be trashier. You have to have a place to put the trash. And when you're inundated with the people that we had, I don't see how we'd any choice but to give enough receptacles to be able to take care of the trash. Thank you.
Well, my rebuttal to that would be, when you go to a city park, you take your trash with you. When you go camp somewhere, you take your trash home with you. And if we made it such that you either get a fine, if the trashcan's full and you put your trash next to it, you get fined for it.
Hey, I'm all for that. Andrea, I'm all for that and I think our police department is. We'll see what happens this year.
Well, I have seen our police department drive by people with glass on the beach. I've seen them drive by people with trash all around them, which I understand that's not the issue. They have to see them throw the trash down. But, you know, goes back to the porta potty trash issue. Do you want that in front of your house?
Hey, I'm with you.
Do you want a trash can, a city trashcan? And may I speak please? A city trashcan right in front of your house. I bought a beachfront house because I wanna sit on my porch and look at the beach. There are times I can't because there's too many cars, I just don't come to the beach then. But part of it is, people do what they're allowed to do, that's human nature. And if we allow them to say, I don't have to take any of my trash home. I can leave all my empty beer cans here. I can leave my water bottle lid. The most common piece of trash I pick up are cigarette butts and water bottle lids. But by allowing people to leave their trash there, we're enabling them to lose their personal responsibility. And I think one of the things that we all want for Jamaica Beach is for everybody to be personally responsible for their own homes, whether they're SDRs or full-time renters or weekenders. But we also want everybody that comes to Jamaica Beach to be personally responsible for enjoying our beach and taking care of our beach or our marina or our canal.
And, and that's, we all agree with you a hundred percent there. And we are doing everything we can and we'll continue to make adjustments and make changes every, every time we, we can. But thank you, thank you, Andrea. Go ahead, Doug.
I have a question about the porta potties. Now, you're not, are you talking about the, the trailer ones that are, have running water and, and...
Yes.
So you're not talking about putting Johnny on the spot out there?
We would never do that.
So the beauty of that is that, A, they're on a trailer, B, they are clean when they come out. They're clean when they leave and, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just clarification though. I mean, if you're talking about coming out there with a trailer and, and, you know, plopping down porta potty all across the...
We would never do that.
I know, but I mean, I'm just trying to, to verify in my mind.
We're taking bids right now just for services to see if it's something that's feasible that we would like to do and offer that service. By the way, you know, we're not having to cross, you know, effing the road out there. You know, we don't, we don't wanna have to...
Right.
Every time we do that, every time somebody gets up and leaves, it, it just creates more problems. So on those busy weekends...
Put a trailer in front of my house, I'm gonna be angry. Because I'm gonna be sitting, I pay high dollars for my car and I'm gonna sit on my porch and stare at my house.
Excuse me, Andrea. We are, we're working on doing that and having, they're, they're the nice ones.
Yeah.
Lane, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
16612 Curly, about the porta potties, why couldn't we instead of putting them in front of people's houses, put them on the side like facing us, but the back be to the park? And the same at this end where they would be at the ends and not in front of people's houses?
Well, and that, that may be a possibility. We're gonna look at everything. Right now, we're just seeing if it's something we even would be remotely interested in.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
This ties into doing restoration and beach and beautification. The street replacement has been completed in Beachcomber and it looks very nice, thank you. The problem is now, we have open-ended streets at the end of Beachcomber. I have emailed you and Anna and if we don't get up some kind of volume to cross the end of the street...
There is bollards there. Somebody put metal T-posts there.
Well, you explained to me those were all gonna be removed. I did not do that, so... They're there.
They cannot be there.
But they're still driving through it.
At the same time, when we do lining up all the posts and bollards and signs and...
Okay, that's just my question, is that still in the works and is that something...
That's what we're shooting for in March, to get all that done.
Okay, so you're hoping that that will be done before spring break because traffic is...
I don't think, we, we looked at all the, at the schedule. I don't think it can be done before spring break, but just right in that time period or right after. But definitely before Memorial Weekend, before we start our season, official season.
Well, I just need to make you aware that golf carts are already going through there. They're already using Beachcomber as an entrance to the beach. And before, I guess it was the last storm, I had to go home for a funeral, so I didn't, I wasn't here, but it appears that, that someone has come down with some type of mechanical device and opened the end of the street up again, which when you open it up five or six feet or is, or the width of the end of the street, people just plow right through there and drop onto the beach from there.
But where are they coming from?
They're, they gotta be coming from 3005 because they turn into Beachcomber and they will come around onto the west side. If they can't get through on there, they go around to the east side. And if they can't go through, then they push what little signs we have down there, they push them down. In fact, yesterday, I pushed one of the signs back down.
We were talking about that, what we're gonna do is, a golf cart minimum is usually forty-eight inches. That's with small tires and everything. We're gonna put it at forty-two inches. We're gonna put bollards across there.
And can we do those?
I'm sorry?
Can we do those low to the ground so that, because what happens is people pull in there, either in their golf cart or in a truck, and if it's a high post, they just push it down with their bumper. And so if we could put something lower to the ground that they can't shove over with the bumper of their vehicle and if they try to drive over it, it's gonna tear the bottom of their car out.
That was one thing we discussed and I brought this up is burying the bollards three foot is not gonna be an option now. We are going six foot to ten foot with all bollards. Whether it be a small one or a large one, we are, we are going deep. But yeah, that's a great idea, maybe four foot high or...
Yeah, I mean, that's what's normally in a parking lot. You know, if you look around governmental buildings and all the bollards that are around those buildings are normally not much taller than this, so somebody can't drive over.
Yeah.
So, that would be my suggestion.
That's, that's a great suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Just thirty seconds. I didn't get to say it earlier, but I did wanna add that, you know, I appreciate everything that all you people do. I don't wanna be one of these people that just complains about things. I know y'all put in a lot of time and effort in what you do. I just feel like there should be some kind of response towards these people that live here instead of completely going off. That was my whole point with what I said. I thank y'all for what you do, but I need some help on this other end.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be calling you. Anyone else?
I do have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I think it's completely unserious compared to some of the other topics, but are we gonna have golf cart access to the new bucks?
It's open on the left. Just go go in there, what's it at?
Oh, it was a yard before, I just didn't know there was gonna be an official interest there.
Yeah, there's a, a way over to there. Sunday is Super Bowl.
All right.
Yeah, private property, we really, we don't have a straight answer.
Yeah. But if they've chose to do that, we won't want it.
It's in the plans.
Is it?
Off, off of, off of like...
Okay, let me see. There's some signs under the corner. Deborah, we, we answered your question about offensive dunes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Bollards.
You didn't answer my other question, though.
Which one, was the legal part?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I won't address that. Other than that, are we ready to move on? Discussion and possible action to approve having John D. Mercer and Associates going out of, going out for bids in phase three of the waterline improvement project. I'd like to open that up for any discussion. Any questions? Anna, you want, go ahead.
Yes, so this is our phase three, which was initially projected to start in 2020, 2021. So we're still a little bit behind. It's replacement of a little bit over thirty-seven hundred linear feet of undersized waterlines. At some points in this waterline replacement, we're looking at replacing galvanized pipe that's inch and a half. So we'll, we'll more than double that with a four-inch pipe. Right now, what I'm asking from the council is the permission to get Mercer and Mercer going in getting out the bids. As you know, this being a hefty project in order for us to stay compliant with, with local government code and, and appropriation of funds, we have to do a legal bid. We have to post it out on the newspaper and we have to allow anybody that could have interest on the project to be able to bid on the project. Once I receive those bids and we receive a recommendation from Mercer and Mercer, then I'll come to council and ask for the monies so that we can fund the project and keep on going. Right now, we are on project two, which is grounds, boots on the ground right now. I would love for the continuation of phase two to evolve into phase three and go in and get us back into the projected scope, which our next projected scope was for 2021. I'm sorry, for 2023. So I'd like to just get on track with that project.
And what we have talked about is, instead of doing the bulkhead there of wastewater treatment facilities, putting that on hold for another year, moving that money over and then that only leaves us, we're still needing about half the money. We have some CDs that are maturing and cash one of those CDs out. And in the meantime, so we're not stopping, we're keeping the schedule going, is we will be, we've got grant opportunities where we can replenish that money. We, we just don't wanna get the grant or work on, put, it takes a long time to get that grant. You know, it could take a year, it could take, we don't wanna put that phase three off a year. We got them here, like she said, boots are on the ground, let's get it done. We have the money, we have the resources, so let's go ahead and... Does that sound good? But we can, we can replenish that money when the grant comes available. Any more discussion? Do we have a motion to vote?
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
All the members say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Next item for discussion, only, no action on ways how to fund the phase three of the waterline improvement project, which is I've already just spoke of. There's no action there. Debbie, you wanna...
The only thing that I was gonna kinda bring in is just letting you know that I know we had a, we budgeted in this fiscal year a hundred fifty thousand to work on the bulkhead, which I think y'all opted to not spend that hundred fifty thousand and put it toward phase three of your waterline project. And like you said, we have multiple CDs that are coming due. I've got one coming due. The smallest of the ones, two hundred and twenty thousand. It's gonna mature on February the twelfth. It's drawing point one zero percent interest. I think this is, I mean, it's up to y'all if y'all want me to do that. You have to do something before February the twelfth. We can put that into general fund and put it into phase three of your waterline project. And then when we get the funds back on the grant, the forty, the forty-five grant, we can purchase a new one. And if we don't use all those funds, we can also leave it in there. You know, it's just, it's drawing point one zero where I know y'all need water line replacements terribly bad and we have quite a bit of money sitting there in reserve. It's not gonna affect the day-to-day general fund or the municipal fund on your operating cap.
And we're not voting on that, we're just...
No, I'm just, I'm bringing it to you, that's an option if y'all wanted to just... It's available.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. You're bringing that to our attention, but this has gotta be done by the nineteenth. That doesn't need council approval?
It has to be done by the twelfth on this particular one. That's the smallest of the two. So if y'all give me the permission, then I will go and let the bank know not to renew that for six months.
Yeah, before I can brief that to the council, I, I need to better understand this financing and I would also like to see a written plan, which we're deviating, we're pulling money someplace else. So I'd like to see like a, a plan on how we're gonna handle the money and thoroughly understand it.
We won't know a hundred percent what that project three's gonna cost. We don't, we won't know a hundred percent of what phase three's gonna cost before the CD matures. So then we're locked up for another six months.
If, if I understand correctly, we're just not renewing that CD and then earmarking that money.
Yeah, absolutely, that's what I want to, that's what I'm saying.
I gave, I gave each one of y'all a, a sheet of what the bank introduced to me to have what's maturing, what the rates are, and that's the smallest one that possibly we could take to fund phase three of the waterline project.
If it honor revenues, how long does it take?
This one's been, well, this one's...
This was three, yeah.
Yeah, this one's three.
But there again, they're gonna be done and out again. We're trying to get them while they're here.
If you want to save six months, is waiting on them to come back.
And material will go...
We're gonna go out and do it. We don't know what these people are gonna do. We may even get a better bid. Okay? I understand signing those.
Your engineers has already gave you somewhat of a price of what it's gonna be. It's almost what, four hundred, three hundred, what is it, three hundred and forty-nine thousand?
Yes, that was the, that was the engineers'...
That's theirs. And, and that's the other thing is the project, this phase has already been engineered. So, you know, instead of the engineer plans just sitting on a shelf, then we're...
Give it a hand, guys.
But Gilbert, that money wouldn't be, it wouldn't be used for anything. She's just not gonna put it back in the CD and then we'd be there if we needed it. And it's making one percent.
Point, point, point one zero.
That's what I wanna know, and thank you.
So that's, she's just taking it out in case we need it.
She's making the funds available at the bottom. To continue phase three, if these, if these guys get the bid, which they're here, hopefully they would bid on this contract and they were awarded a contract.
They will, but God knows.
Then they can go right into phase three and we have the funds to, to...
Yeah, but it would be pretty fun.
And just keep them on, keep them, keep them working, basically.
And then if we get a grant later... But that's part of it, you know, there's a reason we're doing it. We put it in writing, we state it, it's in the budget, it's earmarked and there's a specific rate.
Well, it's not in the budget, it was non-budgeted funds. We only budgeted for the phase two of the project this year. We're just jumping ahead of, of, you know, it's kind of what we're doing.
Anything else? Thank you, anyone else?
I was just wondering, I, I understand taking it out and holding it, but where's it going to be sitting? but where's it going to be sitting while we're waiting? It's not gonna be kind of spread around on other things, will it?
No, I'll put it separate.
It's gonna be a flush file for me.
Well, then you better include me too. Okay.
And like I said, if we don't use it all, then we can, you know, we can always add it to one of these others or, or hopefully get the grant money and replace it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Marcy.
Uh, yes, there's been a lot of excitement for the golf cart parade, so the, uh, final date is the twenty-sixth at the St. Clark for Mardi Gras Tech Parade, three thirty golf cart parade and a four, the lineup is a three forty-five. So I started getting posted on social media today, the little flyer, it's here, paper flyer's out there. Um, if you want, I can email it to you, but it's on all social media stuff, so see you there. Decorate your golf cart, bring your own beans.
One more thing, we start voting on the fourteenth, so everybody come and vote at Seaside Church.
Um, I want to remind everybody that there's three council seats up for the election in May and, um, so if you want to run the city council, you need to do that to pick up an election packet from Debbie, our city secretary, before Friday, February eighteenth. You can find more information on our old city website. Also, this Saturday, um, for once, we are, the West End is gonna have a state, someone who is running for our state representative that will be at Way West Grill, two o'clock. So if you wanted to meet and greet, I don't know that Maeve Middleton's gonna be there, but I'm gonna nudge him. But Terry Leo Wilson will be running for our, um, state representative. Two o'clock, Way West Grill, that's right next door.
Anyone else? Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.